I was in a met at 6:00 PM and voted to go into a closed session to consult with the city attorney to obtain legal advice regarding the Tacoma Junction redevelopment project. That meeting was closed pursuant to annotated Code of Maryland, general provisions, Article 3-305B7. We are now reconvening for our 7:30 PM budget work session. Tonight, we are discussing capital items and I think everyone is just coming back into the Zoom. And when the city manager is ready and has everything, I will turn it over to her.
Thank you very much. Yeah, trying to catching my breath. Appreciate the opportunity to talk about the capital budget as the first budget work session. And but before I get into that, I want to introduce the council to our new library director, Jessica Jones. And Jessica, could you? Where are you? Oh, there you are. Looking at my screen. Jessica, maybe you can say a few words. I'll turn it over to you for a moment.
Sure, I'd love to. Good evening, everybody. I'm really excited to be here tonight. This is my fourth week in the position. I'm really loving it so far. I do want to thank Suzanne and Jessica especially for their support during what is an incredibly busy time, helping me get my bearings in the middle of budget season. So thank you very much to them. I'm in Tacoma Park in spirits, but physically I'm still in Texas. My husband and I are moving next month and really can't wait. This is my third major library construction project in 10 years, so I do know a little bit about what we're getting into. Construction's never easy, but I've also never had a library patron tell me that the temporary inconveniences weren't worth the finished product. So I'm really looking forward to getting into everything. And if you'll indulge me just real quick, I'll talk a little bit about what I hope to accomplish so that everybody kind of knows why I'm here. It's been a really weird year and we're rolling right into another abnormal year. So in the short term, my goals are primarily to find a good communication strategy with the community so that we stay engaged with and visible to them. While the building is under construction, I'm working with the city's communications department on this and I'm optimistic we'll find a way to keep everybody in the loop that wants to be. I want to find a workable solution for the temporary displacement of staff and collections so we're still accessible to the community. And I'm really looking forward to building relationships with other city departments as well as outside organizations to provide more opportunities for collaboration and creative programming. I think the point of keeping this library separate from the rest of the county system allows us a lot more flexibility in terms of being responsive to the needs and interests of this particular community. It's a great strength and I think the way to play to that is through the relationship building so we can find ways to create and sustain engagement. And that's kind of my long-term goal right now. I'm still getting a feel for things, so I don't want to impose a long-term strategy beyond that without the input of staff and community. But I am really looking forward to drawing on those relationships as part of a holistic but also really localized approach to our mission, serving Tacoma Park as a library. So thank you so much for the opportunity to speak and after this meeting, I hope that anybody would feel free to connect with me if I can be of any help moving forward.
Thank you, Jessica. And I just want to say how delighted the rest of the staff have been in working already with Jessica on these plans. She has been here. She's already toured some of our kind of off-site potentials for how we get through the transition time. She's made very good suggestions. She's been on the calls with the architect. So we're, you know, we've put her to work heavily and it's been a delight. So Jessica, I'm glad you're here. You will hear from her a little bit later when we go over the CIP item for the budget and then as we move forward. And Jessica Clark, do you want to say anything? Because I know you've been working with Jessica the closest. We are so lucky to have her. Couldn't, couldn't, I remember when Susan and I interviewed her, we were just textbook answers, just killed the interview. So we are just thrilled that we have a rock star with us and looking forward to working with you, Jessica, in the coming months.
Thank you. I am too.
Great. And so I think I'll go ahead and move into the presentation, but I don't have it accessible. Is it Jessica? Is that something you can pull up for me and?
So I think City TV has got it, but it's not. I can, I can share.
Yes. So give us just a moment and we'll have someone pull it up for you.
As with everything else, we're trying to do three things at once. And so I didn't have the easily accessible final version of this document. One of the things that I think that you will have seen in looking at the budget document that you received is that we did do quite a lot of change to the CIP section of the budget. Including narratives to the various items, separating these by department, showing it, showing this information in a, in a more comprehensive, easily read way. And so I think I'm hoping that you'll have good questions as we go through. But again, as I mentioned, when I did my overall presentation, this is a bare bones budget. And so it's, there's not a lot of discretion. There are a few items in the CIP to discuss though. And so as soon as it comes up, we'll get through going to it. One of the things that we don't have before you, other than a couple of brief mentions, are things related to the American Rescue Plan Act. That will be something that will be coming later. And we, that would be a place where we would have capital items. The American Rescue Plan Act, because the monies must be spent by December 2024, are good for grants and capital projects. So things that are not ongoing expenses. Let's see. Hopefully we're close. I'll just note that we have the capital budget discussion tonight. Next Monday night is the operating budget discussion with a first discussion, kind of a preliminary discussion of the reconciliation with primary discussion of the reconciliation on May 3rd. And so this is, I want you to really get into it and make sure that you get your questions answered early so that we can be prepared for those reconciliation items. As we go through, there is a couple that we've already identified as reconciliation items. But as you come up with ideas for them, please pass them along to Jessica. She's going to be the person, Jessica Clark. We have to, I always have to be careful about the two Jessicas. To Jessica Clark so that she can keep track of all of the questions and suggestions. Is it coming up or do I need to try something different?
Well, I'm sorry. I can't share my screen because of the double monitors. It doesn't work right with me. So yeah, can you do it? It just won't look right if I do it. Sorry.
All right. Thank you. And Jessica, why don't you just move right in? So this was the intro to the general document, my general presentation. It's, this is a maintenance of effort budget with no major new initiatives or services. There is a small tax rate increase that's proposed. And as I mentioned, the federal American Rescue Plan Act will be a discussion for a little bit of a later date. Next. Okay, next. And as I mentioned, the budget schedule is before you. Next. So I just kept a couple of slides from the last time, but highlighted those that are capital projects. So we have the special revenue funds. Nice. See one error here, but these are grant funds that help propose, that help fund the number of our capital projects. And the state facade grant should be in green as one of the capital projects. We'll go through that. Two CDBG funded projects. One is an infrastructure sustainability project on Houston Court. And one is continued ADA sidewalk work. We will go into those. We have, we have the library project, the new avenue bikeway section A and cable equipment. Next. From the special revenue funds, when you look at the American Rescue Plan Act, there are two capital items that we are identifying as likely to be funded from the American Rescue Plan. One is $100,000 for a document management system, which we'll go into, and 8,000 for assistance to businesses related to the facade improvement program. Next. And speed camera fund, there's a few small items, a camera trailer and bike patrol unit equipment. Next. So the overview of the capital projects, mostly routine purchases. And as we go through the different departments, you'll see that we have equipment replacement reserve purchases, which are items that we purchase time and time again when they, when their lifespan is over. So we have IT infrastructure, five police vehicles, public works, equipment, pickup truck. And we have two expensive items. One is a public works loader and one is an electric street sweeper. And we would be splitting the cost half from the equipment replacement reserve and half from the stormwater fund. And Ms. Braithwaite can go into this a little bit. It's much more expensive than our past street sweeper because it would be all electric and that will be a decision that we have to talk about. But we went ahead and put that in.
Can I just ask a quick question of clarification? So in green ink and then before you had green and black ink, which was significant for something. So could you?
Yes, I should be.
Just say the green and black ink thing again. Thanks.
So anything that's green is a capital item that is, is being addressed as part of this discussion in this overview section. So we have general funded, general fund funded purchases, including police equipment, sidewalk work, traffic calming work, road resurfacing, and a variety of other projects. We will go through each of these. We have facility maintenance reserve funds for the beginning of the atrium fill-in project and some HVAC improvements, as well as gym floor improvements. We have stormwater funds for two projects as well as half of the street sweeper and a small amount of equipment from the speed camera fund. Next. As I mentioned, the couple items from the American Rescue Plan Act include a $100,000 document storage and management software. This primarily will help us, assist us in managing grants and contracts, which we anticipate being a major activity with the ARPA funds and the $8,000 for the facade grants. Next. So we'll go through the different departments. For our IT department, there are three major categories. There's the document management system. It is, in the way that I have these described, we have $100,000 in American Rescue Plan Act funds with a priority one rating. We feel that this is an essential piece of technology that we need for use of the funds and distribution, but also for day-to-day activities. And as our staff has talked to you before, and I have staff on this call, our IT manager, Lars Salvio is on the call and a variety of other folks. The document management system comes up time and time again as something that we really need because otherwise we're doing work in a manual way and it's just not helping. It's staff intensive and it's something that we need to get into the right century about. It will be used by all departments, but we do anticipate particularly heavy use by housing and community development as we move forward. There's also network communications equipment, switches, routers, firewall and load balancing, very important for our systems, $40,000 from the equipment replacement reserve and server hosting infrastructure, which is hardware for the systems at about $74,000 from the equipment replacement reserve. They're both top priority items. And on this screen, you'll see what was in the previous presentation that of the whole overview of the budget, which shows how the different departments contribute to the capital improvement expenditure pie. Next. Next slide. We have, go back, police, go back one slide. There we go. So for police, the items here are pretty straightforward. There's our routine replacement of police vehicles. We need to replace five for our patrol cars, ones in SUV. Each of them are $60,900. They come from the equipment replacement reserve and they are needed. The mobile computers that we have are very much outdated. They're at the end of their life. So we need to purchase many of them. They are the computers that are in the police patrol car vehicles. And altogether, it's about $150,000 from the equipment replacement reserve. As you've heard, we have a technology review committee that has gone through the various requests and our IT department does recommend replacing all of these units in FY '22. There's also field radio equipment replacement for $35,000 from the general fund. The license plate reader is also from the general fund, $13,400. The camera trailer and bike patrol unit equipment would be speed camera fund equipment. All of those slash four items are second priority. So they'll be very important, but they're not the highest priority of the rankings that we give in the CIP categories.
Okay. If I can just interrupt this for one second, because maybe somebody could check this. In our budget books, the mobile computers were allocated as coming from the general fund. That $150,000 and it's in on page 234, it does not have it as the ER. So maybe somebody can check that while you can continue.
Thank you. Yes, hopefully I didn't mistype.
Yeah. I just, I actually, I picked that up yesterday. And so maybe somebody can check on that. And then when we're done, we can come back to it.
Okay, thanks. Next screen, please. We have a number of slides from Public Works and Ms. Daryl Braithwaite is on this call. There's the electric street sweeper, a pickup truck, there's leaf collection vacuums and leaf box, roadway crack filling machines and riding mower. And at this point, I was wondering if Ms. Braithwaite might be able to discuss a little bit about these items, particularly the street sweeper. Available?
Sorry, let me unmute.
There you go.
Sorry about that. We have been exploring the options for a street sweeper for a few months now. We are aware that there is one vendor of an electric street sweeper previously available in Europe that's now available, first in California and moving its way eastward. We expect to get a demo of that EV sweeper next week on Monday. In the past, we've had a diesel powered street sweeper. The cost increase for an EV is double what the traditional sweeper is. So we're still gathering information. We put the highest number in the budget to provide us the opportunity to get the EV sweeper if we feel it's going to meet our needs. There's a number of issues that we need to get confirmation on. We get credit for street sweeping as part of our national pollution prevention program that's mandated by the state and federal government. Street sweeping is an integral part of that. There are credits given for regenerative sweeper, which is a type of sweeper. So we need to find out if the EV sweeper has the capacity to do the thorough collection that the current sweepers that we have do. So we're still gathering information, but we wanted to put a number in there that in the event that all the research indicates that it's a good move forward, that we have the availability to shift to an EV piece of equipment for such a large, large piece of equipment. Our current sweet street sweeper, it gets very, very hard use. It is, it is in dire need of replacement. And again, as I mentioned, it's critical not only to the aesthetics and picking up salt after snowstorms and creeping our streets looking well. It also serves a pollution reduction prevention aspect. So we really do need to keep that equipment in good working order. So one way or the other, whether regular power or EV power, we do need to replace the sweeper in the next fiscal year.
Thank you. Yeah, I've heard the street, the street sweeper go by. It does not sound good now. It's getting, it's getting old. Could you also discuss if, are there any of the items, other items on this screen that you think need any explanation?
They're all pretty straightforward. We have six leaf collection vacuums and six leaf boxes that we use and have a 10-year life on. So we, it serves us well to keep those within their life expectancy, just to make sure we have maximum equipment available for the program. The riding mower is, is a, we have, it's one of two. We are actually looking at EV options for this or alternative power options for this. So we haven't nailed that down yet, but we have been exploring it. And the crack filling machine is just a roadway maintenance machine. Again, it is one that we have it as a priority three. So it's one that if it doesn't get replaced next year, you know, ours can keep working for another few years, but it is beyond its expected useful life. So I think the priority listings for these are pretty well reflect those that can continue another year and those that cannot.
Thank you. Councilmember DiBala, I see your hand up. Is that? Do you have still a question?
Councilmember Smith has his hand down.
Okay, yes, you see that.
Ms. Braithwaite, on the pickup truck, what's the manufacturer? Who, who do we usually buy these pickup trucks from?
We typically use Ford.
Ford, okay, because Ford is, is, is moving to electric vehicles for their entire fleet pretty soon. I don't know if that includes the type of vehicles that we purchase, but they are moving in that direction.
Yeah, we've been keeping an eye on the EV pickup truck. There are some, there are some movements in that regard, but currently nothing in the F-250, F-450 that we tend to, engine size that we tend to use for our pickup truck.
Thank you.
I don't see the loader on this. This must be another.
So go to the next screen, Jessica. There you go.
Part two, all pretty self-explanatory. The, the loader is a piece of equipment that gets multi-use across divisions. We use it for yard waste collection and mulch operations, grinding operations. We use it for certain roadway clearing and construction projects. We use it for offloading vehicles and deliveries. It has a forklift detachment. So it's just one of those pieces of equipment that gets a lot of use in the yard as well as out in the field. We do have a 10-year life expectancy on that and this is at its 10 years. So it's not in dire need. It's still operating fairly well, but it is one of those pieces of equipment that is fairly pricey. We have not find it, found an EV option yet for this. There are some, potentially some propane or compressed natural gas, but at this point, we're still recommending a diesel piece of equipment for this one.
Councilmember Smith, I see your hand.
That's my old hand.
Okay.
This on the other hand is my new hand. So I'm just happy that I have this reloaded and I have the hand function now. So on these pieces of equipment, in some cases you use plural, in some cases you use single and several of them are rated priority three. We only have one loader.
Right, correct.
But we have more than one pickup.
We are only purchasing one pickup truck for next year. We have multiple pickup trucks in the, in the fleet, but only one is scheduled for replacement.
Right. So could you just on this slide and the previous slide identify those things that are the, we only have one of? And so if it did.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Well, vehicle lift two, obviously we have two. We have a one and a two. The tire truck changer is, is a single item. The loader is a single item. Trying to think, the leaf collection box and leaf fact, we have six of those pickup trucks. We have multiple. Can't remember. I'm going by memory here on the prior page.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, only one street sweeper.
Only one street sweeper. That, just by the nature of what it does, you know, the grit and grime that it, it sucks up. It just, it just wears those things out. Plus the brushes and the curb hits and it just, that's a really hard used piece of equipment.
Not to dispute that, but the reason I asked the question is because of the, for all of these, as Councilmember Smith alluded to, the market is changing so quickly that by next year, things could look very different. And in terms of, in terms of vehicles or equipment that is electrically powered and how much it costs. And that's the reason I ask.
Yeah, I, based on what we've been hearing from vendors, they think it's more to like a three to five-year timeframe before we see EVs in the large equipments. Pickup trucks and sedans and smaller vehicles moving much faster. The larger vehicles, the F-250s, F-450s, the off-road equipment like loaders, backhoes, skid steers, leaf collection vacuums, they're all, you know, further out. And then in terms of pricing, I don't think we'll see a reduction in price. Who knows? It may as more vendors get into the market, price will, price will be reduced. There always is a little bit of anxiety about being on the entry level of any new technology. So I do worry about being in the first generation EV sweeper, for instance. However, the EV that we're looking at has been in, in place in Europe for some, not a whole long time, but for a while. So it isn't brand new, but it is new to the US. So there's always that, you know, that potential for getting the early bugs in the initial offering of such new technology.
So let's go to the next slide. So Ms. Braithwaite, I think I'm going to turn this back over to you too, because this is, this is one that's pretty much all you. Want to describe what we've got?
Sure. This is the ongoing ADA sidewalk work. As, as you all know, we've had funding for multiple years to address all the ADA compliance issues in the city sidewalk program. And in the past recent year or two have shifted to address sidewalks along state highways for ADA violations or issues with safety. So this is continuing that work for both streets on sidewalks on city streets as well as doing sidewalks on state highways. Are, you know, i- if all things being equal, we'd like pots of money much larger than we have to address those in a more quick basis than we currently have. We were on hold for this fiscal year for the ADA sidewalk work and some of the new sidewalk work. So we're trying now to get that underway. There's been some delays just getting our vendors back in the city to do the work. We're looking at funds, a total of 500,000, 200 for city sidewalks, 300,000 for those long state highways. So that, those monies will go fairly quickly to address the ADA compliance issue. We do have a list of non-compliance city sidewalks. That's been provided to the council in past budgets. That hasn't changed. We don't have a priority listing yet for state side, state highway sidewalks. We, in the past year or two, we addressed the state ADA sidewalk compliance when we were doing other projects. So we combined efforts that most particularly happened with Flower, Carroll Avenue where we had stormwater work that was required. And so we combined that with a, with a sidewalk project. We also had a significant portion of very, very bad sidewalk on Philadelphia Avenue across from Montgomery College. So that was a first priority that we did in the initial year where we had funding. We had intended to do a sidewalk survey so we could rate each block portion of sidewalk along state highway. We have not been able to get to that yet. It's still my goal to have a condition rated program so that we could identify by sidewalk condition. So we could be moving from worst to best. So we don't have that yet, but it's certainly my, my hope that over the spring and summer, we will be able to get that sidewalk condition evaluation completed so that we can have a rating system for the remaining state highway sidewalks and get a better handle on how many years at what funding level it will take us to get through that. New sidewalks and traffic calming is basically a pot of money that's used for either projects in the queue or new projects that we are not currently aware of that will come to us based on the current process for resident or council requests for new sidewalks. We do have one current sidewalk project request in the, in the queue with traffic calming in the Hopewell Larch.
Catlin.
Catlin, thank you. Neighborhood. We also have a Kansas Lane sidewalk that's been lingering for, for quite a while. Those tend to come up based on petitions or citizen requests. So we do have a number of projects traffic calming wise that have come in and that Jessie and I are working through to make sure they meet the requirements of the, of the regulations. And then of course they come to the council for public hearings and implementation. The street light upgrade is just a pot of money that we keep in the budget annually just as news, a street light improvements or requests come in that we have funds available to make those requests of Pepco to change or add lights. Since the LED retrofit that the city did several years ago, I, we have not gotten many, if any sidewalk or street light addition requests. We still occasionally do get some requests for shields on the existing streetlights. So that's primarily been the activity. But we do like to maintain a fund available because an individual streetlight itself can be upwards of eight to $10,000 in terms of installation. And then lastly, the street rehabilitation is just that ongoing funding level of $500,000 to maintain streets in a good or better condition throughout the city. We will be doing a new pavement condition evaluation report citywide this summer. So we are looking to that to be the guiding document for the next five to seven years for street restoration. So we use those pavement condition surveys to prioritize the streets and the order in which they will be resurfaced.
Hey, let's go to the next slide. So one of the things that we've been talking about for a long time is the fill-in of the atrium floor and as a way to allow for a safer workspace for our police dispatch unit and to minimize the amount of sound that goes to them as well as allow for a larger space in the atrium. I'm not sure if there's much to add to that, but what we are proposing here is assuming that we're not going to be able to jump on this in July because we're swamped, that it would be kind of late in the fiscal year to begin and then $600,000 is in the CIP proposed for FY23 to complete the project.
Yeah, I just wanted to note that we will go out to bid for that project. So we'll have some final pricing, you know, much later in, in the next fiscal year. So we'll have a, a firm number for the project. That has been designed and has been developed over a year ago. So we do have the construction documents available and ready to go out to bid.
So we've got the screen coming back up. I noticed that it might not have been the most recent version that we had before. So we'll, it's not far off, but we'll continue. Ms. Braithwaite, would you like to go ahead and talk about the stormwater projects?
Sure. With the.
Go back, please.
Yeah, the competing demands for funding. This, what we have in this current proposed budget is two of the four stormwater projects that would have been on our five-year CIP for stormwater projects. So we're delaying two others because of the added cost of the street sweeper. So this is, the first one is a, really a great project. We're doing it in tandem with Montgomery Parks and Councilmember Cersei has been a critical component part of that to make this happen. So she was instrumental in getting the Parks Department to recognize and identify the needs for the replacement of the Hillwood Manor Playground. And in conjunction with that, we let them know that we had a stormwater funds available for a project. And we've been working collaboratively with them to fund a portion of that stormwater project. So we have just the development of a very good project there that's made better by the combination of both the city and the county efforts. So it's really critical for those funds to stay in so that we can meet our commitment to the County Parks Department for that portion of the project. The other is a project on Cockrell Avenue. We have some components of our stormwater pipes that were historically placed in, of course, stream valleys when they were initially created. Those were buried and houses were built on top of them. So this is a particular location where we want to move the stormwater infrastructure to the roadway and the right of way and get it out from under backyards and private property. So this particular location is at Cockrell and Spring. It's been the site of flooding from time to time, especially during extreme rain events. And so the backyard of a property gets flooded out because water basically comes up through the system instead of going, staying in the pipes. So we, we identified this as a real critical piece of work that needs to take place to move our stormwater structure, improve and enlarge it and put it in the right of way versus, versus a current private property situation where it's located. The other project.
Councilmember Cersei, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So real quick, so for the Hillwood Manor Playground, also Director of Public Works, you, you've been in the trenches right along with me on that. So for the Hillwood Manor Playground one, it's, just remind me of timing because I, I think this is one where it's critical. We make sure that those funds are available for us to move forward this summer, correct?
Yes, that's my understanding. Parks has put this on a pretty fast time timeline for them. And so I think they are, they have got program plans almost complete, if not complete. And I think they're going out to bid for this project. We haven't really got down to the details of when and how we transfer the money to them, but it is a project that they fully intend to do in fiscal year 22. And so we want to make sure our funds are available for that.
Perfect. Thank you. Is there anything else you wanted to say, Ms. Braithwaite, on this screen?
No, I just, the other projects that we had originally, previously on the five-year CIP have been moved out to FY23. They're all shown in 23. The original 23 is plus the two that were pushed out. That's probably not likely how we'll be able to proceed. So there would be changes in the out years of the CIP as we, you know, move projects forward or, or hold them back in order to be able to complete them within the funding level that we have in the, in the program.
Thank you. And one of the things that we're still waiting for information from the US Treasury Department on is the extent to which some stormwater projects could be handled through the federal funds, the American Rescue Plan Act funds. So we're waiting for determination on that. I see Councilmember DiBala's hand.
Yes, thank you. Backing up a step to the HVAC control system, which is rated a three. So given what we know about improvements needed in ventilation in buildings, I'm assuming that an HVAC improvements in the control system would really help that. So I'm wondering why a three. And then my second part of that question, is, is there anything else we need to do or have we already done it? Thank you.
Yeah, I, our former facility maintenance supervisor did his level best to get us the best air filtration and air handling system within the building before he retired. So currently within the community center, all our systems are upgraded, meet the CDC and in fact exceed the CDC requirements for filtration and along those lines. The project that is proposed to be funded this year is part of a multi near-year effort. It's actually the automation of the system. So it's basically bringing the controls online so that they can be managed on a computer dashboard as opposed to manually at the, at the equipment or at the thermostat. So this particular round of, of work would be on the third floor. Previously, we've done the main level and portions of the basement and got them moved to online control. So this is just a continuation of that. Again, that's why it's level three. The system's going to work regardless of this. It's just automation helps with energy efficiency. It helps with management. And so the goal is to automate the HVAC controls throughout the building.
Thank you.
Okay, next slide.
Did you hear it about the ventilation overall?
The ventilation's awesome. I, I have to say, our, our former facilities manager really made this a good place. And so it is, as we begin to move towards opening the building, I am comfortable that the HVAC system and the ventilation system really will be a protective measure. So we go forward. Okay, let's go to the next slide, please. So recreation. One of the very small items is $10,000 to address the gym floor in the rec. The gym floor in the rec center that was damaged by flooding. And so these guys are doing some kind of soccer game, but if you're bounce, if you're dribbling a basketball, there's dead spots. And you think you're going and then it doesn't work. For $10,000, we can, we can replace or fix the floor. We recognize that the rec center would be renovated or as part of a rec project going forward. But in the meantime, we've got people who need to have some activity. We don't have very many, we only have one gym available in the city and. Particularly as a way to. Help us, you know, do these programs at a, at a very difficult time when there's very few options, particularly in Ward six. I do think that it is worth it to fix the floor, even though the project will still move forward, and I think I saw Councilmember Smith's hand first.
Uh, yeah. The flooding issue, has that been fixed? Do you think it's going to reoccur?
Ms. Braythwaite?
Uh, flooding has to do partially with that shed in the rear of the building and the partial blockage of the drainage under there. It's something we're now aware of and do maintenance and clearing fairly regularly. We don't anticipate another return of, of the flood. Uh, you know, that had originally happened, so I don't see that as an ongoing problem. It was just an event where we. You know, once the facility was transferred to us, we had to learn about that particular vulnerability.
Okay, and is there any way we can reuse the floor in a new gym or do if. We move to the next phase of redeveloping this property, do we just, you know, get rid of the floor?
It's an interesting idea, I know I've been to restore stores and seen sections of. Bowling alley floor, so there is a market for beautiful hardwood floors. That would need to be identified in demolition plan potentially to either reuse ourselves or. Take it out in a way that enables the floor to be reused in another facility, so that's an interesting idea of. Recycling those components, it may be possible.
Yeah, if we're going to spend $10,000, might as well ready to use it for something else.
Yeah.
But thank you.
I see Councilmember Cersei.
Yes. Unmuted, I'm unmuted.
You're good.
Perfect, so, um, so this is, this is great, one of the things that, if I remember correctly. We were also had some ADA related issues. In terms of like bathroom access and things like that at the rec center. Are those also things that we're considering to try to make some adjustments? On, um, or is it just, you know, keeping in light the fact that we are trying to redevelop the site, is it? Replacing the floors because that's the most critical to make sure that we're still able to, you know. Do basketball camps and things like that, but hold off on other types of upgrades that are needed at the rec center until we. Kind of further down the pipe in terms of the redevelopment, does that make sense?
Yeah, so Ms. Braythwaite may have an answer to that, I know there's been discussions about, you know, we've been tweaking things, but I'm not sure that, that, that we. We would go to doing a complete remodel of the bathrooms, I don't know, Ms. Braythwaite?
Yeah, my understanding is that the current situation is not ideal, but does meet the minimum standards, there could always be improvements with larger doorways and larger stalls. Those carry with it a pretty high cost in terms of remodel, so the assumption has been that since that building is. At least been part of the discussion of, you know, complete redevelopment, that we wouldn't invest that type of money into. Retrofits within the existing building envelope. We're most mostly just trying to keep the building functional until it gets demolished and replaced.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, next, please. So for our Housing and Community Development Department, I'll talk through a little bit about this, but we do have our managers on this call. We've got a couple CDVG projects, we get about $91,000 a year to spend on essentially capital projects for. Through the CDVG program through the county. A project that we've been working on for a number of years has been how to make some improvements in the Houston Court area. Public infrastructure and sustainability improvements, and this has been a partnership between. The Sustainability Manager, the Planning Manager, Economic Development. And Public Works trying to look at ways to make this a more livable area. The ADA sidewalks is for those areas that meet CDVG criteria and opportunity to spend those funds to improve some of the sidewalks. The, the next three items are each for $40,000. Kind of our bike improvements, whether it's shareos or bike. Parking areas, corrals, signage, those kinds of things. Improvement, replacement and bus shelters. And then the public land implementation. Projects, and in each of these, I'll have. Ms. Chris, we speak to them in a moment, but in each of these, we're also trying to really build in public art, so both are public works projects. And these other projects, we're trying to build public art in them, for that reason, the numbers are a little bit higher than they were last year. And there's not a special line item for public art in the same way, and so what we're really doing is making sure that. We are building in. Our, our public facilities, a sense of pride and. And improvement to the, to the landscape, Ms. Chris, do you want to speak at all to these items?
Um, sure, I'm happy to, just to put it in context, I would start by saying that. And I know that probably on the next slide, Suzy will touch on more of these, but that the planning division oversees and manages. Nine grants currently equalling 1.6 million dollars, some of those are multi-year grants. And so the, the CDVG, the New Hampshire Ave Bike Ways, the Safe Routes to School. The COG grant we have for Maple Avenue and the arts grants. Come with their own funds and their own timelines and deadlines, and so those become a priority, I think when. When the HCD managers have been before council for the Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan, we have repeatedly emphasized that as opportunities come up, it will. Shift some of the focus. Certain directions and grants has certainly been a big one for us in doing that. So in that context, we are continuing to move forward on the bike improvements, the bus shelters and the public land management especially. And some of that's linked to the grants we have and are working on, for instance, the. Council of Governments Grant we got for Maple Avenue. Complete Streets, we wanted to have some funds available to see if there are things that we can. Small changes we can make right away as they're being identified in the plans or. To be ready to move to the next stage on some of those, especially for bike improvements. And the bus shelters, we are chipping away, as council recalls, you identified and approved. Priorities for where we should locate based on ridership. Race equity considerations, climate change, cost and safety measures in no ranked order, and so we are moving forward with that and have. Been hoping to move forward regularly every year with consistent funds for that. The, as City Manager mentioned, we have rolled public art funds into the plan that council approved to include. Public arts and public works, so they're in, some of these infrastructure projects now include. A little extra to cover art in bus shelters or the art poetry and sidewalks that we have initiated this year. Some of those kinds of efforts, and I'm sure you're wondering about the. Public land management plan, what, what we actually call the public space plan. We have been, I think, really ambitious, given the other projects that we're carrying and thinking that we would have a plan in front of you at this point, so. We have tried to hold funds to enable us to move forward as particular projects were, were identified. And I think that in addition, what we need is probably to hire a consultant. We've learned from the rec department experience with community engagement that. There are ways of doing this that are very productive and move it forward. And given the staff time that we have available right now, I think that's probably the way to go. So we are looking into doing some of that with this year's funds and. You know, the end goal is to get a plan in front of council to look at, really, we're look, you've. Already approved the scope of work and the goals, what we really want is to develop criteria. To look at needs in the city and we've done some of the groundwork for that with the park. Proximity and race equity considerations, we have those maps up on the page. But what we really need to do is, is get it over the finish line, get it packaged up with criteria that council can review and. Look at, we have also done a survey, a public space survey on the goals and scope of work, generally it seems the results are that people. Concur with, with council's approval of that, so the next step really, I think, is going to be. Getting some consulting help to move this across the finish line.
Thank you, the other thing that's been really exciting is the New Hampshire Avenue Bike Way, we've been working on this in segments. This is section A, but we're down to essentially the final bit, so we. We have a city match that goes to the. Funds that we received, so $80,000 of general fund to the $320,000. In grant funds, and this gets us to essentially the contract, the construction documents, is that correct?
Yes, so what we have is a grant to get to 100% for section A from Holton Lane down to Auburn Avenue. It's spread over a couple of years, so this is the, the biggest chunk is in FY 22. And we have started it in FY 21 and will spend probably 100,000 for that. We have finished the section A to 60% plans, we're working on section B to 60% plans, which should be finished by June. Will be applying for section B to 100% plans and both those A and B 100% will include the construction documents. So the following, that will be the actual construction funds, we'll go for tap money on that, I think.
Right, so we, we'll go after grant money, the other thing that. You know, I would love to be able to make it a, and as a strong argument. That this bike way is essential to our small businesses and for people to get to our businesses in the Tacoma Langley area. And so, and connect with Tacoma Junction and a variety of other locations and down New Hampshire Avenue, when we have these. Strong arguments, I think, for how to reinforce the health of our commercial districts. It'd be wonderful if we'd be able to use the federal funds for this under the American Rescue Plan Act. And so that's something we're, you know, not promising it, but we're pushing the envelope in every direction to see if there's some way that we can advance it. One of the things that's very frustrating of being a small town is that we're having to do this one little bite at a time. When, when we like to just get the bike way done, and so if there's a way to do that. We'd love to find it, in the meantime, we're doing a great job, one bite at a time, and I really appreciate. The federal, the support that we've gotten from the state and the county and, and the hard work of our staff. Let's go to the next slide, please. So on this, we've got a couple, a couple points, one is a little bit of a strange thing, one is have housing project undefined for $250,000. We had originally had kind of in and out year in the CIP, an economic development project that both had. Commercial contribution and a housing contribution for a project, kind of an undefined project, but, but being prepared for something like that. We don't have something in mind at the moment. We. Left the $250,000 from the general fund in this section in case there is something that does make sense for a housing project that comes up. This is not funds from the housing reserve, one option, and it does make some changes with reserves, but one option could be. That these funds go into the housing reserve for another, for a use at a later time, so I don't have a specific. Project in mind for this, but trying to make sure that we recognize that. There may be an opportunity to do some housing investment that we want to do, and so these funds are there. The next is the real movement on our Neighborhood Commercial Center facade program. And I believe we have Ms. Cook Gaines available to speak to this. I don't see everybody, so I'm not sure, yes, there we go.
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm coming, I'm coming in, I'm bringing my camera with me.
So could you describe this project, and then I also will note about the issue about the $58,000, but why don't you go ahead and describe this fun project?
Sure, um, I'm really excited about this project because it's been. Not the most productive conversations around many of our large property owners in discussions around facade improvements. The stars have aligned at the Tacoma Langley. Center, and I have been having weekly meetings with. JBG Smith on the refresh is how they're talking about this one, the refresh. Of this strip mall, you all know it hasn't been touched in decades. On several different levels, we're having conversations now where. Instead of the individual businesses kind of competing for these limited funds. We would just kind of put our entire allotment for that area into the full, the full refresh. What we're discussing is not just the Tacoma Langley Center, but also the businesses along Holton Lane. So we really are talking about hitting two of the three major areas that our grant was supposed to cover. And to be clear, we're probably going to see three times the impact. Simply because we're partnering with such a huge. Property owner, so I'm really excited about that, the grant was for 100,000, the committed match from the city was $50,000. And the businesses were thought to. Each have a little skin in the game to the tune of $8,000. At this point, I have requested from the state of Maryland as well as from. The, what I'm requesting from the city is that we waive that $8,000 for the businesses, it's very obvious, we are. Still recovering and in the middle of a pandemic. These are funds that they're not going to actually have to spend on something so, so forward-thinking. As facade improvements when they're trying to just keep operating doors open, so really excited about that. I also have some really great insight into which businesses. Are struggling to pay their rent, which has been an additional conversation because. We paused on this program not knowing who would actually be here. So we weren't sure with, you know, we didn't want to spend money on signs that were going to be then taken down six months later. So this really does give us a lot more by working with the property owner, give us a lot more insight and intel. So we're spending this grant money really intelligently. So the total from the city would be 58,000 instead of the originally allotted 50,000.
And if I can just mention that. It was almost the, basically a typographical error that summed the 58, the 50 and the eight to 58, but then it added it into the column. So we need to back out that $58,000 amount from the CIP, so that is a, that is a reconciliation savings that we'll put forward. One of the things that, I don't know if you'd like to describe a little bit, but the, but the ownership of the, the company is also putting in a lot of effort on this, is that correct?
Yes, um, so you, you mean the property owner?
The property owner, yeah.
Yeah, um, you know, this is an estimate, but we believe that we're looking at anywhere from half a million to 1.2 million. Around the refresh of those two locations. So we don't have all of our numbers just yet, we do have, we've already sent out RFPs to vendors to get estimates, so we really are moving forward. And crossing our fingers actually that some work starts in June. So we, we really want to, you know, spin this out like quarter one, get it done, so. We're hoping that it moves. we're hoping that it moves along quickly and I'm feeling really good about the team that I'm working with there.
Excellent. Councilmember Dibala, I see your hand up.
Yes, thank you. I I had um I had two questions and one was whether there was a property owner contribution to this, and that's great. That is just really great to hear. Um and I love the idea of doing it with an entire property and not business by business. So my second originally, my first question, I'm going back to the housing projects, so this is for the city manager. So this is um in in addition or in s- in addition to or instead of a contribution in another part of the budget to the Housing Reserve Fund?
This this is in addition.
And did we have both of these last year?
It was in, it was in the out year in the CIP, and so we kind of caught up to it. So this is just um there was a lot of back and forth about what we thought we could do in the coming year. And so we um moved some of the economic development funds out of the FY twenty two budget with the expectation that ARPA funds may be very helpful um in a lot of those projects. Um but we still wanted to make sure that there was some funds for housing project in case that needed to go in with it and may not work exactly with the ARPA funds.
And I will say, just to add to this, we've been able to do some, you know, almost magical um projects this year around affordable home ownership. Um these were um these were relationships and partnerships that we were developing, but we did not know that the opportunity was gonna come at such a time that feels so inopportune. But um this would be the type of funding that allowed us to be able to make those two really great decisions um to really invest in affordable home ownership and address that missing middle conversation we've been having.
Yeah, I I um I I know that both of those came from the Housing Reserve Fund. Um so that's obviously something that we don't need to debate at the moment. I just wanted to ask whether this was instead of or in addition to. Thank you.
Councilmember Cersei, I see your hand.
First, I want to say thank you to our Economic Development Manager. I am so excited. I cannot wait. Um I know that this has been a project that is uh in terms of the facade improvements and working with JB G Smith has been a long time coming. So um to to get from the point of cordial interactions to true partner is a really, really big deal. So thank you so much for that. Um and I think my question around the housing project is akin to perhaps where Councilmember Dibala was going. And so in my mind, I initially thought and definitely correct me if I'm wrong, but having the undefined housing project funds outside of the Housing Reserve Funds would provide us with a a little bit more flexibility. In my mind, I was thinking, well, that would be the only reason why you would parse it out, because if you have it um as a general fund project idea and there's lots of, there are some requirements, you know, around what the Housing Reserve Fund could be used for. Um that these funds would basically become a little bit more of a housing slush fund that would still need to go before council. I I I know, I'm sorry. Would still need to go before council for approval, of course, and I just gonna just do whatever you want. But would provide a little bit more flexibility than what's in the Housing Reserve. Is it was that the original frame of mind? Am I just inflate making it bigger than what it really?
You know, it was, it was really part of a cooperative project that that wasn't thought through completely about a combined commercial and housing concept. And 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 it just kind of got changed in the budget process and also trying to think about the um ARPA funds. We've not had a full discussion about how this works with housing, so I think that's still a discussion to have over the next couple of weeks. But I just I didn't want to lose the funds either as we go forward, so it's here. And we can either move it or take it out or change it around a little bit, but but it's an opportunity to to hold a space uh for something, because one of the things that Ms. Wiggins and Ms. Cook Gaines have done is build some partnerships with these providers and that um allow us now to be a little bit more nimble. What I also, we really don't know what the federal funds requirements might be. So there may be, it may be useful to have it in some kind of a separate category. I just don't know yet.
Okay, no, that's helpful, because I I again, I was making it into something that's a little different. So it would be helpful. And also, I know that um one of the council priorities, as we were kind of having lots of conversations um was also about implementation of the Housing and Economic Strategic Plan. And so if there's certain aspects of, you know, some of the first phase projects um under the Housing and Economic Strategic Plan implementation that would be useful to make sure that we kind of have some funds available outside of the Housing Reserve. Um that might be helpful to think about as well. So again, this has been identified as a housing project, like a specific project. But I don't know if there may also be some flexibility in saying, look, we want to make sure that we have some funds available in the general fund um to actually make some moves on other aspects of implementation of the Housing and Economic Strategic Plan document that might be distinctly different from types of projects that you can fund under the Housing Reserve Fund.
Yes, thank you. I think I think there's needs to be a little bit more thought to this. It was more to, it was more placeholder. And I appreciate that. All right, let's go to the next slide, please. So we have a a few items for our uh primarily our city TV. All of these are funds from our cable grant funds, so it's not a general um uh tax fund monies. Uh it's not, um it's it's projects and work that needs to be uh upgraded for our city TV editing process. One of the things that I know there's been some questions. I heard somebody say, well, gee, since we're not, since we're meeting remotely, why do we need city TV? And and this is exactly the time we really need city TV. Um most of our work right now is over video. Most of our uh communication um that really gets around to various focuses through is through the talented uh video staff that we have. Um but we also need to make it so that it's more communicative. So we need the closed captioning. And we particularly need to to deal with the fact that um we have people who want to see the information in ASL or in other languages and how do we communicate? So all of these are elements that our city TV staff have put together um as key um uh investments through their cable grant funds. See, I have a question from Councilmember Dibala.
No, I had a question too. I was, oh, you just answered it. I was gonna say, why, why can we not use cable graph ones for this? But even though this says SRF, by SRF, you mean cable?
Yes, it's the cable. It is the cable. This is from the Special Revenue Fund and and it's a ca- cable grant is one of them.
Right, okay. So ultimately, this is cable money. Got it. That was what confused me. Thank you.
I just had a question on, and one of the things that we we have been talking about is when we are able to go back in person, having maybe a hybrid model um to use the best of both world, being in person, but also the convenience of people being able to, you know, either do public comments remotely or other things. Is that something that looking into our capacity to do that part of the budget this year?
That's my understanding. We're trying to accommodate that. I think Alvaro Colavias on the line, he may be able to speak to it, or Jessica Clark. Uh but we certainly, that has been a primary discussion and and you know, it it goes to the point that we have where, you know, we've gone through a pandemic, we've learned to do some things differently. What are the things that we can build on from that? What are the good aspects or the elements that are helpful that we can then take it to the next level? And and as we go back to, maybe it's a new normal that serves some multiple purposes that we needed to serve. I may need to get back to you, Mayor, on on some of the specifics related to that.
Okay, great. I just want to make sure there is money in there, just because I think that's important.
It's it's critical, yeah. Councilmember Kastik, I see your hand.
Thank you. Um I just found one of the answers I had, which was how um the um cable grants that are uh being used for this compared to the the funds that might be used for the library, because I know that's something we're also planning on doing with the cable grant funds. Um is there somewhere in the budget that you can point me to? It doesn't have to be right now, but where we have an overall um balance on the the cable.
It's it's in there. I'll find it for you and we'll send it to you. All right, let's go to the next slide, please. So now we have the library and we've got two Jessicas to talk about the library. Um but obviously, the one of the the big project for this coming year is library construction. And we have um a seven million dollar bond uh that was taken out by the city uh several years ago. Uh we're anticipating spending about four point five million dollars um in this coming FY twenty two from that bond uh as well as uh funds from state um grant funds. Um and let's see, I'm not sure, Jessica Clark, do you want to describe some of this? Or Jessica Jones, I'm not sure what your system was for how to talk through this. See if I can get Jessica Clark out. Maybe I caught people at the wrong time. In any event, um so there's a couple of things. One is that um the uh the bond that we have costs the city about three hundred and ninety thousand dollars per year. So when we see the total amount of four point, four point five million of from from that um category, that is not uh taking that kind of money out. We're paying a certain amount each year for this bond. Um the status of the project is that um over the past I think about month and a half, there's been tremendous improvement on some of the energy efficiency measures in this coming building. Yes, now I can hear you. There we go. Okay, Jessica Clark.
Technical difficulties when it's time to present to council.
Well, let me turn it to you, please.
Thanks. So as uh the city council will recall, we last presented to you back in December on the library design. Um and at that time, in Council Resolution twenty twenty thirty, you gave us very clear direction um that we could proceed from the design phase to the construction documents phase, all the way through to bid documents, but with a couple of conditions. Um one of which was a a bigger commitment to achieving nothing short of lead gold um as well as investigating how close we could get to net zero. Um and coming up with a package of energy efficiency improvements, not to exceed four hundred thousand dollars. And then finally, to take another hard look at tree preservation, um creating educational green spaces around the building as well as preserving the garden next to the building. So as you know, there's a lot of moving parts to this project, and I emailed the council a more detailed update earlier today. Um but just a couple of highlights on um the fact that we've made progress on all fronts. So first, we finalized the floor plan. There were a couple minor adjustments like adding a door or workable windows or soundproofing here or there um that will make staff more comfortable, but don't really don't add much overall cost to the construction estimate. It's kind of included in the package, but there has been a lot of um back and forth between our staff and architects on those minor adjustments. Um we also, our architects are committed to the lead goal design. We've signed up to have a USGBC lead coach, which is free of charge to facilitate that process. We're also working through lead pre-certification and have a proposal from our architects on uh the design fees needed to achieve lead gold. And part of that is exploring the green education spaces um outside, which count towards the lead innovation category. And we are still exploring that. On energy efficiency, um we've met again with the Committee on the Environment. They've been really indispensable in terms of providing their expertise to this process. Um at their suggestion, we actually have decided to switch the rooftop unit upgrade to a heat pump, which actually isn't very commonly used, but has really excellent efficiency gains. Um we're also moving forward with triple pane glazing and the enhanced commissioning process is underway. For solar panels, we've had a a couple expeditions onto the roof um and throughout the building to look at the routing of that and how that might work. The new library is gonna add a lot more, obviously, surface area for panels. The good news is that our existing solar panel configuration plus the energy efficiency improvements will allow us to maximize the number of lead points in the energy performance category. Um and we are looking at, based on, we're gonna wait a little bit later in the process to see how many new panels we can add. Um but we believe we'll be able to add um, you know, a good amount of panels to be able to continue to to get close, as close as we can to net zero. Um we continue to refine our soft cost estimates. Uh we are lucky that we have now office space that uh our new library director, Jessica Jones, has been exploring with her staff over on the Washington Advocates Hospital campus. Um and they're looking at, you know, doing the calculations as to how much of our book collection will fit there. But we know that we'll have a lot of savings um and will be less reliant on commercial services thanks to having that space. So the estimate that we presented to council back in December still stands. With tree preservation, um we're still looking at options. We've found some initial findings that again, it's not looking promising on site, um but we're looking at other ways uh to replant larger canopy trees offsite. And we've also asked the Commemoration Commission to give us a recommendation on how um we might commemorate the trees that are there on site. And then we've also found a location across the street for the community garden. And in terms of the overall project timeline, all of this back and forth has added about two months. Um so when we last presented to council, the project timeline was that we would start construction in August. Now we're projecting that um the construction, the bid documents will be ready to go out for bidding an award in August and construction can start in November. And next week, Jessica Jones and her staff will be um beginning to pick out interior design specifics. So we're at the stage of picking curtain colors, et cetera. So all of that's very exciting. Um and I'm sure Jessica can add uh more about that in the Q and A if council is interested.
Thank you. And this this um particular screen had a typo on it. It it says late July, but it's supposed to be in August um for bid documents. Um Councilmember Kovar, I see your hand.
Thank you for information and Jessica Jones, it's nice to meet you remotely. I think we may have to require everybody to be named Jessica who 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 works here now. Um I had a question. First, I'll say it's encouraging to hear all of those developments that uh Jessica Clark just mentioned, and um that sounds like particular on the environmental and green pieces. It's moving in a positive direction. I just wanted to talk briefly or ask briefly about uh just some of the financial aspects of it. And I know this is something that comes up every year and uh maybe it could just be clarified. So as I understand it, what you're saying, uh city manager is saying, even though the amount to be spent could be in excess of four million dollars from from the the bond reserve, because it's spread out over uh you know, close to thirty years still, a little bit less, since we've been paying it off for a few years. The kind of direct hit on the budget is limited in this fiscal year to that three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. But there's always been this question, I've never been entirely clear on it. Is the four hundred, is the four point five million that's listed as um an expenditure, but how that works in terms of the reserves? And I know we've tried this in the past, but maybe it could be explained again.
It's, it is very difficult to explain. Um I I know our finance director's on the on the call and it may be something that we can now write a little bit since we're closer to it. Because it's the the advantage of actually spending the funds that are essentially in a, in a, it's called a bond reserve. that are essentially in a, it's called a bond reserve, is that then that bond reserve goes away and it, you know, we don't have, we can focus on the 390,000 and not on the big number. But I, why don't I have something written for you as part of our frequently asked questions? Because I think we're now at a place where, because we're this close to construction, we can give more details about how that actually will work in a in a more easily understandable.
All right, I'll I'll look that over and then if there's follow up questions, I'll ask them. Thanks.
See, Councilmember Dibala.
Thank you. And along those lines, when you write this up, maybe you could. Again, we've we've been through this, but just just refresh us. So we have fiscal '21, '22, and '23. Um, it's up to more than the $7 million bond, the two and a half million cable and the 300,000 for grants. And so is the difference, the debt service, or is the difference something else? And so maybe you could at some point just.
So Councilmember Dibala, we received your your question earlier today, and we can provide that in writing as well. But the fiscal 2021 projected column will not be fully spent. We'll only spend a couple hundred thousand of that in this fiscal year. So that's why it's not adding up on that on that line in the budget.
All right. So it says, so maybe a more fundamental question for everything, not just this, is what is fiscal '21 adjusted? What does that actually mean? If it doesn't mean adjusted for decisions we made on hold money, just, you know, money we haven't spent. Please, please just define it so everybody knows.
Adjusted means it went through a budget amendment.
Thank you. Got it. So so decisions we made on hold money that have been reflected in budget amendments ought to be reflected in here, assuming, I mean, there's a lot of numbers, but assuming that math got done. But something like this, where we haven't reconciled it yet, because we're not done with the end of the year, that is not reflected. Okay, that helps a lot. Thank you.
Yes, that's correct. All right. So are there any other questions with the library? I I will say, I I just want to reiterate my thanks to Jessica Clark for her leadership on this construction project work. It is it is a lot. She's worked really well with a number of the other staff members and just really appreciate this. So we we have an exciting project and it will be such an asset for Tacoma Park. Let's go to the next slide, please. So now we've talked a little bit about debt service and we're paying for these bonds. We have a community center bond that only four more years of payments are required. That average annual payment is 183,000. And actually, Jessica Clark, or this, this does not have, this version of my PowerPoint does not have the bond payment items in it. So the more, not sure if we've got a, I mean, I can go through these as they are, but there's there's some charts that show the bond payments and the impact on the city that are not in this version. Why don't we go through and then we'll go back, we'll go back and get them. Next slide, please. Oh, go back one. One of the things that was, that's that's a real outlier is $150,000 that we need to pay in June of 2022 for a a loan that we received from the state of Maryland for a public parking structure project that was planned for Old Town many years ago. And that didn't move forward in that way. We got $300,000. We used 150,000 on variety of parking improvements. But we are to pay back the other $150,000 to the state of Maryland. It's been on our various charts for many years as an outlier that, you know, way enough in in FY22, we'll pay this $150,000. And and now it's FY22. And so that is due. There have been efforts to see if we can get this waived or written off. We are still going to work on those efforts, but it is represented in our debt payments. Next slide, please. We took out $2 million for a transportation bond in 2017 to help pay for the Ethan Allen Gateway and the Flower Avenue and Green Street projects. Those payments will continue through FY32. The average annual payment is about $166,000. Next. For the library, it was a 30-year bond. The average annual payment is just about $390,000, and those payments are through FY47. One of the things that I want to, you know, we've got included in the budget document itself, is that we meet by far all of the standards for not having too much debt as a city, both our own standards and the standards of GFOA and other best practice criteria. So we are of a very affordable debt service. The numbers will be going down after after this year with the $150,000 payment after four years with the community center bonds. And then we will just have the transportation and the library bond as outstanding debt payments going forward.
Yeah. And Susie, I have the other version, if you wanted to show that now.
If you've got it able to show, that'd be wonderful. Here we go. So we did show this one slide. This works fine. So this is a, this shows the various different bonds. There's the, if you go from in the colors from left to right, the red is the community center bond, the green is the $150,000 that we need to pay for the for the, to the state of Maryland for one year. The purple is the transportation bond and the light blue is the library bond. The orange column is the total amount of debt that is due each year in the years going forward. So this gives a sense about what the debt burden is on the city. We do have it a little bit high this year, simply because that extra $150,000. And then it does go down in the future. So I'd like to go briefly through our council priorities that we went through last time. We appreciate that you've set priorities. Next. Again, the highlight of green are just the elements that have capital that are in the capital budget. But basically, we want to mitigate the impact of COVID-19 on the community and city operations. And so if there are ways that we can use federal funds for some of the bike improvements or other infrastructure improvements, stormwater improvements and technology, we will work to do so. Next slide. Obviously, library, lots of safety improvements in the right of way are things that we would want to pursue with our capital budget. Next. We don't have a capital item in our fiscal, fiscally sustainable government, but the, I will say, the technology makes a huge change to us about how well we can manage these various funds. Next. Lot of the capital projects are to help us be an environmentally sustainable community. The stormwater improvements, the street sweeper, and a lot of the public right of way improvements. Next. Again, technology. Next. And then what we can do to to really do the capital investment in our commercial areas and the health of our small businesses to help our fiscal situation as a community. We are looking at ways that these various funds really show a partnership with our commercial areas, our small businesses. And and as we try to get out of the pandemic and get on a more fiscal, fiscally strong footing for our business community, it helps the city as well in the long run. Next. So we've gone through the presentation, the proposed budget and and the first public hearing. And tonight was the capital budget work session. I'm happy to answer questions this evening. And then we will also be collecting information and questions to post and get back to you. And I see Councilmember Kostic has her hand up first. Think first.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll let I'll let the mayor do that. I was doing it because I could see it. Mayor, I don't mean to take away your rights to choose the identify the people with their hands up.
That's good. So far, I'm Councilwoman Kostic and Smith. All right. I just have a couple of questions that I kind of jotted down, a couple of them actually from earlier. I didn't bring up when we were going through some of the public work stuff. So in general, I was just looking through the CIP and I, Councilmember Dibala's question about the adjusted column made me realize that we had previously had an estimated column for the current fiscal year rather than that adjusted column. And I was just wondering if you have a sense of how close the adjusted column is to the actual expenditures during the past fiscal year?
That's a good question. I think it differs by the cat, by the department or the category. Ms. Clark may may know more specifically, but I think it's a kind of a case by case basis.
Yeah, I mean, the the adjusted is the adopted plus the budget amendment. So if it's not, it's not necessarily projected spending. So if if it wasn't a budget amendment, it was, it wasn't reduced.
This year, we had budget amendments pretty late in the in the year, so it's a little closer than it is sometimes.
If there's anything from there that is just something that we aren't spending anywhere near the amount, or there's a significant change, if we could just get an update on that, I think that might be useful. And then I was curious with regard to the AR, ARPA. I always forget if it's APRA or ARPA. Our funds. Do you have any sense of when we will know a little bit more about the the restrictions and how we can use those funds?
The only information that I've received is that the the Treasury Department needs to be expending its funds to the to those entities that it gets gives directly. So not the, not the city of Tacoma Park, but to the states and to the larger cities within 60 days of the action by the Congress. So we're getting a little close to that, I think would be May. And the idea was that they may use almost all of that time to come up with their instructions. They've been issuing a couple of things about how to make sure that we have all of our ducks in the row to be able to get the money when it's issued. There's, there have been a little bit of information that has come out. But it's been very small. I think it's really going to be close to that time when they issue those first round of checks is probably when we'll see the the likely direction by the Treasury Department. And my understanding is that they really don't want to just hand out little bits at a time. They wanted, they want to have one kind of holistic document that gives that direction. So that's not to say that they won't have more after that, but I think they're really trying to gear up for a fairly significant package of directions so that we can start making decisions about what to do with the funds. That would likely be at least 30 days before we would get the funds. So there is time, even before we get the funds, to start talking about how we may be able to use it.
Okay. Great. Um, and then just I had a couple of thoughts as I listened to the Public Works presentation. And thank you very much, Ms. Braithwaite. And it was very helpful, I think, to go through each line item and just explain what everything was. So that was great. Um, I'm really excited about the idea that we will have, hopefully, a condition rated sidewalk list very soon. I think that's great. And we've been doing it for years for the streets. And I think it makes sense to shift that over and also do it for the sidewalks. And that that seems like it'll be a huge bonus and and better capacity to look at, you know, how we're doing sidewalks. So thank you for working on that. Um, you mentioned the streetlight requests. And I'm not sure if it necessarily requires another streetlight, but I just wanted to toss out. I know the location at Carroll and West Moreland is a place in particular that there's been some concern about it being dark at night and difficult to see pedestrians. With, it's kind of a funky intersection and people turning in and out of that location. So it just might be a place to look at for potential improvements. I don't know that you would want to put in a whole new huge streetlight, but maybe there's something smaller that could be done there.
Yeah, we've been working with the Business Association to try to get the property owner to allow us to put a ride on the building.
That would be great. Yeah.
Most effective and efficient way to do that. So I can touch back to see if they've had any progress on that.
Great. And then my other question was about BYU Morrison Park. And I really appreciate you sending me some information just the other day about it. There is a fairly significant portion of the park where the sidewalk is really degraded and needs to be replaced. And I wondered if that is budgeted into sidewalks or somewhere else, or if that's something we would need to spend additional funds on from somewhere else or where that might fall.
We haven't considered it part of the sidewalk network, so it's really more a pavilion or a facility. It, you're absolutely right. The concrete condition of the paved area is in really bad shape and and needs to be replaced. It's kind of been in this hold as everything else gets developed. Or, you know, the the project at the junction was working through its process. I think we probably need to turn back around and look at that to see if we need to do a status quo, just a replacement in kind of the existing concrete surface there. If that is the case, we could, there's a number of different funds that we could do that work with, whether it was sidewalk work or whether it was facility maintenance work. I can talk to the city manager about it, figure out where best to bring those funds from. It's, you know, in rep, you know, relatively speaking, it's a fairly small area that needs to be done. And if we aren't redesigning anything and basically just removing and replacing the existing concrete surface there, we could probably do that fairly, you know, reasonably priced.
Okay, that's great. I I will say, I think the park is looking really great with with the tables and and the art. You know, it's it's being utilized much more, and I'd love to see that be in better condition and be a little more accessible as well.
Yeah, Councilmember Kostic, some funds for that had been in the budget for a number of years that we kept putting it in and kept putting it in, expecting that it would be part of a a general Tacoma Junction improvement project. Then, you know, as part of the discussion to have it, that NDC would help identify how to do improvements at BYU Morrison Park, and that's part of their agreement and and then your resolution. And, you know, so we did not put a special amount in this budget for extra work. But I agree with Ms. Braithwaite that if it's, if it's more replacement in kind, it's something that we probably can work to find a way to accommodate.
Great. Thank you.
Great. Let's see, who is next? Councilmember Smith.
Can you elaborate on the plans for Houston Court, the $91,000?
Uh, I think so. And Ms. Chrisley, would you be able to discuss it? I know Ms. Braithwaite's been involved in some of those discussions as well.
Either one of us can do it, Darrell, if you want to take the lead.
Yeah, where we, this initially, this concept initially came to us as part of an ECO district. And Houston Court really set itself up very well for consideration of that. I think I think some of that whole process is a little, a little bit beyond our staffing level at this point. But it did identify a number of ways that city funds could be brought together with with other special revenue funds like CDBG to facilitate some improvements in that area. We've identified a potential sidewalk construction, some stormwater construction, potentially some energy efficiency, solar panel type work. A part of it will depend on the interest and motivation of the property owners and residents in the in the court. One of the critical pieces is that in order to facilitate sidewalk construction, a lot of that property is private. So we'd have to have the agreement and of the property owners in order to build a connecting sidewalk around the facility. We do have some possibilities for. We do have some possibilities for doing stormwater treatment in the area which doesn't currently exist. And so we were hoping that we could just work with the. The residents and the property owners to identify several components that we could use CDBG funds for. As well as potentially combined with city funds to make some of those improvements. Not sure, Roz, did you have other things that I've missed?
Only to mention that this plan is being carried over from FY twenty one. We had expected to be able to execute at this point. And again, due to staffing levels, we've not been able to do that. So we'll carry it over into FY twenty two.
Right. I mean, it was difficult in the pandemic to have those those conversations. This also been. You know, the whole discussion, even with the police department and everything else, but how do you make this really feel comfortable? And more livable. And that's that's been the goal. It's really wonderful to have the multi department look. At this area. And now we need to work with the residents to make sure that we. Kind of putting together the right package for them.
And what recommendations did the Housing Department?
I'm sorry?
The housing that housing was housing involved. That was kind of a separate discussion outside of that.
It wasn't actually part of the. The CDBG funds. It's only ninety one thousand a year that the city gets from the county for that fund. So we were really looking at. More kind of community amenities for that court for those eight buildings there.
But now that we have time to go back and and put it all together, we'll all be together to to be talking with the residents about it.
Okay, it'd be great to see if we could have, you know, maybe a community garden or. Something like that for a little area. Maybe some artwork also.
Sounds wonderful. Well, we'll look into what we can do for you. For them. Uh, let's.
Councilmember Kovar is next.
Thank you, and thanks for the presentation. I have some questions I'll submit in writing, but I just wanted to ask. Three or four things now. Maybe you can just give me the reaction or whoever should give the reaction. So one thing I noticed on. On the police equipment. Many of those things seemed. Fairly routine for. Past years, but we do have the task force. Going to be making some recommendations. And I'm just curious. On the extent to which if they recommend some shifts in terms of. How the police's technology or what's involved in enforcement and things of that nature, whether there's a sense that. Some of the things that are recommended could be changed as a result of that. And if we therefore ought to. Somehow build some flexibility into aspects of the police budget.
No, those are good questions. I mean, the the cars are continued to be needed just because. There's a lot of cars and they wear out each year and and you have to keep that up. There's a couple of the aspects that I think fit into a lot of the things that are being looked at for reimagining public safety. One, when you have the camera trailer. The more that you're taking subjectivity out of stops or other kinds of. Activities. That's often seen as as useful. And some of the camera trailer activity can help. It's they call it a force multiplier, but it also means that you don't have to have. A lot of police officers walking around and doing something. You can, you can have this. Information and and. Checking about speeds or different kinds of activities of of problem areas, not not being done by police officers, but being able to be handled. Remotely. Similarly, money for the bike activities and, you know, the bike outreach. Is a way to. Really, I think, help address a number of the elements that have been included and and discussed about. How policing and public safety should be done. I don't think there's a lot that's. The mobile computers are absolutely essential. That's not something that that we can have a police department and not have. But the other items, obviously, if there's a discussion that. Some other approach is appropriate. I'm happy to have those discussions.
Yeah, I think I think my point is just that I don't want us to. Prematurely lock in certain things if the task force is going to come in right around the time we're getting ready to finalize the budget. I think we understood all along that there was that timing issue there. So that's one point. Then just a couple of other things on some of the public works. Items that are listed, some are priority one, but several of them were priority three. And of course, nothing is proposed. It doesn't have value to the city. I understand that. Is there a sense and maybe Ms. Braithwaite could also weigh in on this, whether. Some of the priority three items. If they waited another year, I think there was one that was mentioned where that might be possible. How do those? Those rankings of of the less priority one is really kind of needed, two, three, and four become less. Urgent or pressing, if still valuable. Could we forego some of those priority three ones in this fiscal year?
I think there's possibility of delay. One of the challenges is, and and I've been here long enough to see this happen, is we delay one year and then. Assume we'll get it the next year and then we don't. And so that it can kind of become a chasing the tail kind of situation. We do have standards for vehicle and equipment replacement. We serve ourselves very well when we stick to those. There's a little bit of flexibility in that and we can certainly add a year. One way or another. So that's certainly possible, but the understanding needs to be that when we've delayed it a year, it then needs to become. Priority funded item for the following year.
And then just two other things on stormwater. So there was reference made to. Two of the projects that were potentially on the table being postponed. And I don't know if you can just say where the the location of those were, but. Would be, but also. Depending on what we found here back in terms of the ARPA funds and the federal monies, I assume. Could those two additional projects then be funded out of that? Or how do you see that working out?
It's possible. If we find that the ARPA funds are going to be able to manage stormwater, I think we wanted. I I would assume that we want to develop a more comprehensive approach to stormwater projects and not individually identified items. We've kind of built in our own assumption about two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar a year capital project. So we've built our five year CIP. Based on a set level of funding. I think if ARPA funds become available, it really kind of. Opens the door to a different way of approaching this. And and at the front end would be consulting services to identify problematic areas and where we. Could partner with State Highway and Montgomery Parks and other organizations to really capitalize on. Some of those corridors that may be more challenging. So I think. I don't think it it. I don't think that they're necessarily the same. I think ARPA funds would really open up the possibility for some broader scale and larger scale. Type projects.
Well, I definitely, I definitely agree. It it could only be. One category, I would support what you just described, because I think we really do need to to look at those problem areas. Last thing, and maybe this is something just for the city manager. You mentioned the hundred and fifty thousand dollar parking loan. Could we use that for some kind of parking improvements? You know, we do have the Parking Management Task Force, and I know their work has been slowed. Because of COVID and potentially other factors, but. Is there some parking related things we could use as opposed to just sending the money back?
We've been, we've been having conversations. We had conversations last year trying to be creative with that. I'm going to continue to have those conversations again. You know, they, they weren't that interested in it last year when the when the discussions were proposed, but. This is a different year, so I don't know.
Alright, thank you.
Can I just want to follow up on it? When you say they weren't interested, who's the they? Sorry.
The state of Maryland that we had that we had the the loan from. Yeah.
I wonder if we could go to the EV parking. Stuff that Gina is doing. I don't know. Anyway, just a thought.
I would love to be creative with it and not send the hundred fifty thousand bucks.
Councilman Dibala and then Kostic.
EV money was one of the two things I was just going to ask about whether, because there's plans for that as well as the. Complete Streets proposal. Recommendations. Both seem like worth asking about. For sure. The other question I had was a more general one. We had a, speaking of stormwater. We had in our resolution asked for some options in the budget process. We're looking at. Stormwater on private property. And so I'm still hoping we can hear about that. Maybe that's next week, not this week.
Well, it it's, I was struggling a little bit about where to put it. I'm leaving it in the operating budget discussion, but there was the three hundred thousand dollars that. Kind of was was a pot of money, which I would think at least half would go to that, to that effort. If the council were interested in pursuing it.
And you see that as operating, not capital. Well, okay, we, about it next week.
I mean, it would be, it would be consultant services. I I I didn't want to necessarily assign it to capital, given that it was more of a discussion with council.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilman Kostic.
I just have a question that might be completely an inaccurate thing I wrote down in my notes. But I have a note from the first budget presentation. That there was sixty five thousand that was coming from the general fund to the stormwater fund to supplement it. Is that right? And how does that work in the budget?
In the budget document, there's. A new chart that's at the beginning that talks about transfer in and that that it's the consolidated financial. Look, and it has a line about transfer into the general fund or transfer out of the general fund into those. So this would be a transfer from the general fund to the stormwater fund. To ensure that the that the fund is sufficient in stormwater for the projects.
And is that due to the? The capped rate that we have this year?
No, it's due to the fact that last year, the the we did not. Go to the full tiered system last year and we were down about fifty thousand dollars. And so we had talked about at the time of budget that we would transfer from the general fund to the stormwater fund fifty thousand. We did not finally do that. So we we still are a little bit in a hole for the stormwater fund for FY twenty two. Going to the tiered system is starts to make up for some of that. The amount for the cap is is a relatively small amount. So. So I don't think that's the issue. The other issue is just the expense of the storm of the street sweeper. I mean, that just really does, you know, it's really an exception. It's not our normal process for. This about seven hundred thousand dollar a year budget that we anticipate for the stormwater fund.
Thank you. Councilman Dibala, do you have your hand up still or?
Yes, I do. Thank you. So the sixty five thousand that we need to have. Transferred from the general fund to the stormwater fund in order to make up the cap. Is reflected where? Because I think I lost you.
Let's see if I can find it.
We, you don't have to tell us right now. It can, I can, we can take it by email, but I just wanted to, I would like to know where that. I agree with Councilmember Kostic. I'd like to know where that is reflected.
It's in the front of your budget book. It's the chart that has. Funds in, funds out.
Consolidated financial summary.
Okay, alright. I thought I heard you say it wasn't in there, but so we can straighten that out.
Yeah, it's page thirty six.
Just wanted to add that the cap that the council had identified for the stormwater fee is fairly small. Am I right? Thirty five hundred dollars?
Oh, so the sixth, okay, that's part of why I'm confused. It's.
Yeah, so that's that's the sixty five thousand dollars really is not an issue.
Something else, right?
It's the, it's the high cost of expenditure relative to the revenue coming in for this particular year due to the street sweeper.
Right, right. That's the big, the big item. Okay. I've forgotten what the other one was. Thank you very much for now.
Alright, I had a couple of questions. I'm not seeing any other hands. Just wanted to double check on the mobile. Computers. If somebody had an opportunity to check whether or not that is coming out of general funds of the. Equipment reserve. And if we don't know tonight, we can get back to me, but.
Yes, did you want to speak to that?
Yes.
It's a general fund. I'm sorry.
Yeah, this should be in the general fund. Should be coming out from general fund instead of the ERR.
So it was a typographical error on this, on the chart, on the presentation.
That was a question I did have is is why would this be out of general funds and not the equipment reserve?
Because typically, this is not an item that has been. Put into the equipment equipment replacement reserve before. This is a new item that we purchased. In this fiscal year. That's why it is first in general fund. But in 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 the future year, if we determine that this is something that we are going to continue. To to get funded, we may put it in the ERR.
It was handled differently in the past and not so many were were purchased at the same time. And so it really. I think it should be in the ERR, but it's not at the moment.
Councilman Dibala, you have your hand up still?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. I I. I I remembered what the other question was. It's a more general question. About a couple of times that tonight, there's been a mention of a, an item that hasn't. That we know we're not going to spend and that has not yet had a budget amendment. And so just remind us all generally. How that works at the end of the year. We have a number in this book. That reflects what your current estimate. Of the of the ending balance of the general fund for this year, but that does not include. Correct me if I'm wrong, that doesn't include the, some of these items we've identified tonight. That are not yet adjusted for.
That's correct. If it's not, if it's not as considered adjusted, it's.
And so I know that you you treat each year separately. Nevertheless, if we haven't spent it this year, it's going to show up somewhere next year. And so if there are more than just these two items, we flagged tonight. Significantly sized ones, I'd appreciate knowing what they are.
We'll, we'll go through that and find.
Sorry that took so long.
No, I got it.
And a couple of other questions. One question I had is on the ADA sidewalks. Looking at the out years and hopefully at some point will be done with the ADA sidewalk work. I guess at least in theory. And I was just wondering if that actually might be a good place to spend ARPA funds. Because it is not an ongoing, it's not like our, I wouldn't want to put it in our road repair or other things. Because those are things we should be budgeting for each year or new city sidewalks. But I was wondering. If kind of knocking out a really good chunk of the ADA sidewalks would be. A good use of ARPA funds.
We have to wait and see what the Treasury Department defines. If we can make it part of a package that says that this is being done to help people who have been affected negatively by the pandemic. If there's a, if there's that nexus there. Then absolutely, this one time investment that could really help. Where I would see that as more likely is near business areas or connecting to business areas.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. It's been, and I was thinking that at least in my head, thinking about the SHA sidebar work that needs to be done is exactly in. Some of those areas.
Yeah, so hopefully the Treasury Department is going to let us go there. I mean, yeah, that's where we. Really, I don't, I have no idea on that.
There may be the separate infrastructure bill too, and that would be.
Well, and there's, you know, yes.
Yeah. And I would just say, as we're for the deputy city manager, as we are doing the reconciliation list, I. I do think moving that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the housing out of the CPI and marking it for the housing reserve. Might actually make sense just so that we. Keep track of it. I think it's a. I think it's a bit confusing having it in the CPI. I understand the explanation, but. That was just something I wanted to flag that we may want to just clean that up on the reconciliation list.
Alright, noted.
Yeah. That was it for me. I just want to say, I think, as. Um, that was it for me. I just want to say, I think, as other people have either said publicly tonight or in emails, thank you for the budget this year and the budget book. I don't know if it's just because this is what, my seventh year, whatever eighth year looking at it, but I really did appreciate the new information, how it was presented. And it was very clear. So thank you for all the work that I know that goes into that. And I don't know if Jessica Jones is still on, but we're very excited to have you join us and to see the library project moving forward. So I am not seeing any other hands or anything. And so I think we can be done for this evening. So thank you, everyone. And remember, if you have any budget questions or other things, send them to the deputy city manager. All right, and we'll continue our budget discussions. Thank you, everyone.